City Recorder to do a roll call.
Counselor Dropkin.
I'm here, just grabbing my charger.
Counselor Garvin.
Here.
Counselor Geary.
Hello.
Counselor Stassen. Is she in yet?
Not yet.
Okay, uh, Counselor Peralta.
Here.
Council President Minky.
Here.
And Mayor Hill.
Here. And so, uh, the purpose of our work session this evening, this being the eighth of September two thousand and twenty, is to do a follow-up on House Bill two thousand and one. And so we'll call on Planning Director Heather Richards to introduce the topic for discussion. Uh, we have received a staff report prior to this meeting and, uh, you should have all received that. So Heather, we'll turn it over to you.
Yes, great. Good evening, Mayor and councilors. Um, we thought we'd take advantage of this work session to update you on the work, uh, relative to House Bill two thousand and one. There's some timely, um, decision points in front of us here. Um, the state has been working through rulemaking for the missing middle housing portion of the, um, bill, and that will be going to the Land Conservation Development Commission for, um, consideration in a public hearing process at the end of this month. And so we had, we wanted to bring it to you, what is in the bill, the proposed rules, and see if the city of McMinnville wanted to provide any testimony there. Um, and then we also wanted to update you on some other efforts, uh, that are either underway or will get underway here very soon relative to this, uh, House Bill that passed last year. So I'm gonna share my screen.
Heather, you're muted.
Sorry, I think my Zoom quit on me. Can you still see my screen?
We, no, no shared screen.
Okay. We'll try this again.
There we go.
Okay, um, so we'll talk about what's in House Bill two thousand and one. Focus, focus on the missing middle housing code. Talk about what's in the state rulemaking and upcoming public hearing, uh, infrastructure planning. And if we have time, we'll talk about the Housing Production Strategy Discussion, which is House Bill two thousand and three. So House Bill two thousand and one, it's commonly referred to as the Missing Middle Housing Bill. This was passed in last year's, uh, full legislative session, so two thousand and nineteen. It requires cities of certain sizes to allow middle housing in areas and properties that allow for the development of detached, single-family dwellings. So what's important about that is any zone where we allowed, uh, detached, single-family dwellings, this code applies, this bill applies to that in the city of McMinnville. The House Bill two thousand and one middle housing is defined as duplexes, triplexes, quadplexes, cottage clusters, and townhouses. That's spelled out in the legislation itself. And it says that cities with populations over twenty-five thousand, which includes McMinnville, shall allow the development of all those missing middle housing types in area zone for residential use that allow for the development of detached, single-family dwellings and duplex on each lot or parcel zone for residential use. So in McMinnville, this is impactful in all of our residential zones because each residential zone we have allows single-family dwelling units. So the R one through R four zone will all be impacted by this bill. And then our office residential zone as well. The timeframe in this is that we're required to adopt land use regulations and comprehensive plan amendments to address the provisions of House Bill two thousand and one by June thirty, two thousand and twenty-two. And what it means is that we need to adopt provisions in both our zoning ordinance and our comp plan that allow these missing middle housing types in all these different residential zones. We also can review, um, whether we have any areas in the city that have infrastructure deficiencies. And there's a process for that. And if we do find that we have areas where we have infrastructure deficiencies that cannot accommodate this type of upzoning, um, in different areas in the city, we can request an extension for when we apply the missing middle code to that particular area. Those extension requests are due by June thirty of two thousand and twenty-one. So the state, in terms of how to implement the bill, uh, the State Department of Land Conservation and Development, what we commonly call DLCD, set up a rulemaking process, uh, that clarified how cities will implement this bill in their communities and more specifically prescribe the requirements under which we need to work on implementing this bill. It also, uh, the DLCD also put together a rulemaking committee to create a model code. And that rulemaking committee has been meeting for the past year. Um, I've been serving as an alternate on that for cities. If the city does not implement the code and plan amendments, uh, that are spelled out in House Bill two thousand and one prior to the deadline, the model code will automatically apply. So how does this align with McMinnville's work? Um, we've been supportive of House Bill two thousand and one from the beginning because we were already having similar discussions here at the city. Um, we had a, we put together a housing strategy about two years ago that's in draft form with a project advisory committee that had recommendations on how to address some of those issues of opening up our single-family, um, dwelling unit neighborhoods to more types of housing as part of our Great Neighborhood Principles. Um, our Planning Commission work plan included an emphasis on housing and site and design standards for this year based on the fact that we wanted to make the ability to bring different housing types into McMinnville more, um, easily accessible to developers, but also do it in such a way that it meets McMinnville's values and aesthetic conditions. And then we have adopted a comprehensive plan policy under our Great Neighborhood Principles, um, where we said the city shall develop development codes that allow for a variety of housing types and forms and shall develop site and design requirements for those highs, housing types and forms. So we've been doing all that work before this House Bill passed through the legislative session. The Great Neighborhood Principles, as you remember, there's thirteen of them, a baker's dozen. And it's all about, you know, ensuring that everybody has a great neighborhood to live in. And two of the tenets of the Great Neighborhood Principles is housing for diverse incomes and generations, and then also housing variety. So that was sort of the prelude to us looking at the different types of housing types in our single-family, um, zones, residential zones. And then we also, as part of the Great Neighborhood Principles, have several other principles that come into play in this, which is parks and open spaces. Uh, we want, uh, neighborhoods to be pedestrian-friendly, a human-scale design, and unique and integrated design elements, which is all based on what's occurring on the private property frontage, as well as in the public right-of-way. So we started in two thousand and nineteen, working on a package of residential site and design review standards. We hired a consultant to help us draft development and design standards for a variety of different housing types. And I'll walk you through sort of what that looks like. This is going through the Planning Commission right now in work session. Um, they've made it through most of this. We will, uh, work on bringing their, um, suggested amendments into the package. And then we are waiting for the state to finish its rulemaking so that we can make sure this package is compliant with the new rules coming from the state, um, so that we can move forward with adoption. But this was done with a mindset of being cognizant of what was being discussed at the state so that this could be compliant with that. The way that this, uh, package is structured is it has a table of, where what we'd like to do is put a table of uses together for, that specifies which housing types are allowed in which zone. And that's how we started with the discussion. Now, the House Bill essentially is telling us that all housing types in the House Bill need to be allowed in all zones in McMinnville. Um, so that answers that question for us. But we still have a couple of additional housing types we're looking at that we'll have to dialogue, um, which ones will be allowed in which zone relative to those. Um, and then we'll put that table together as part of this package, uh, and review it with the Planning Commission. And we hope to have that table done by the end of this calendar year. You, you, you will note with the package you receive, we haven't done that yet. Um, what you received tonight is, uh, the draft chapter for the site and design review standards that we want to put together for this package. So the residential site and design review, it does focus on several things. Uh, it focuses on the Great Neighborhood Principles and making sure we're bringing those to bear. Um, it focuses on compatibility with existing neighborhoods. We felt it was really important in McMinnville. Uh, aesthetics are a very strong, um, sense of value here for this community. We wanted to make sure whatever we were doing continued to build upon that. Uh, we've learned from a couple of developments recently, we don't have any residential, uh, design standards. And some developments have really, um, brought to, brought for the community conversation of whether or not we need some. We focused on building form, uh, what does the building look like in neighborhoods? And how is it compatible from that perspective in terms of human scale? And then we also wanted to do a format in terms of the development code that's user-friendly so that people, so that not just those of us who are planners or others who work consistently in the development world can understand it, but so our local builders who are doing custom-built homes can pick up the code and understand what it is that they need to comply with and how to comply with it in a fairly ready manner. We are looking to bring, um, different types of housing types into our neighborhoods that could mimic some of our single-family products that we have. Uh, these are some examples of that. And the housing types we're looking at in this package includes those that are in the House Bill two thousand and one, so cottage clusters, plexes, duplexes, triplexes, quadplexes, townhouses. We're also introducing, uh, site and design review standards for single dwellings. Um, we are bringing apartments into this package as well. We feel multifamily needs, um, site and design standards too. And we're introducing something that's fairly unique for McMinnville, which is a tiny home, um, product so that people who are interested in building tiny homes on their property are able to do so in a fairly straightforward manner. We thought that that might be, that might meet a future need in our community. So we wanted to have that in there as well. Um, and then in terms of our apartments, uh, for housing types, we're gonna, we're dividing the apartments into three types of apartments. An apartment block, which is a, a larger apartment complex. Um, walk-up apartments, which are sort of smaller nestled in, and then courtyard apartments. The structure of the document is that each housing type, so the tiny homes and cottage clusters and townhouses, will each have a devoted section of the code. And in that devoted section of the code, it will have an overview, which defines what that housing type is, the concept for it, the guiding principles, how it can be used, and then photo examples for it. Um, and then each housing type will then have basic, a basic development standards table that provides to the developer, these are, these are your clear and objective standards that you need to meet to build this. Um, that will, it will have lot dimensions, lot sizes, setbacks, building height, and parking so that there is no confusion as to that. And then we took, we took it one step further and we said, we're, we want to have basic development standards, but we think there's three different scenarios that will play out in McMinnville. And we want to make sure that those basic development standards with a, with a goal that these are compatible in the existing neighborhoods, um, that we have three different scenarios. So we have infill development. So if you are going to do this housing type in a single-family, uh, neighborhood that is mostly single-family dwelling units, how do you bring something like this into that neighborhood and still be compatible? So infill development, new development with an alleyway, and new development without an alleyway because we're seeing both of those types of housing come in at this point in time. Each housing type in the code will also have a basic site plan. So we'll have a table with clear and objective standards. And then we'll have a basic site plan that sort of shows how you can meet all those clear and objective standards, um, on a parcel. And then each housing type will also be subject to what we're calling applicable universal design standards. So these are those other covenants of the Great Neighborhood Principles, the open space and things of that nature that we felt are important for each housing type to fundamentally have in terms of their overall amenity and quality of life, living on that lot. And we wanted to make sure that, that we were able to have standards that meet each of those. The universal design standards are street frontage, uh, the front yard, alleys, parking, common open space, private open space, compatibility, the facade, and subdivisions in terms of what new subdivisions need to have a standard component. So what this means is we're saying that these are basic values of the city for all housing, to, to have street frontage and to have a front yard and things of that nature. And then what are the clear and objective standards for each of those components? So in state law, now moving forward, um, for housing, each housing codes need to have very clear and objective standards so that a developer knows exactly what they need to do to meet the standard, to be able to come in and submit a proposal and a permit and be able to get through the process in an expeditious way. So each universal design standard will have a description. It will have the intent of that universal design standard and then photo examples. So the one on the slide is for the front yards. And then we'll have specific design standards for that particular universal design component. And then we will also have a menu of options to allow flexibility. So it was important to us that even though we want to make sure we have clear and objective standards, we don't want to create a box that is too small, that doesn't allow for new innovative ideas to be brought to the table. And so, um, there will be a menu of options, um, that developers can follow if they choose to go in a different direction that still meets the intent of the universal design standard. So an example of some of the universal design standards is street frontage. What we wanted to do with street frontage is maximize the planter, uh, for street trees and landscaping. As our lots are getting smaller in McMinnville, um, we are really struggling to meet all the needs of utilities and still maintain room for street trees and landscaping. And as we all know, with climate change and other issues, um, street trees are really important to a community. So we want to make sure that we still have the ability to, um, be able to plant them and recognize the need for them. So we're, we're working with our utility providers on what that looks like in terms of the different, uh, conflicting standards and how to put something together with these narrow lots. The other thing the street frontage does is it maintains a pedestrian space in neighborhoods for pedestrian connectivity. And then it also maximizes on-street parking space. So much like there was the discussion for Baker Creek North on the, the width of driveways, um, we're bringing that into the zoning ordinance as well to make sure that we are still ensuring that there is, there is room for on-street parking in our neighborhoods. Um, there's discussions about front yards in there, and that's kind of providing the transition between public and private space. And you'll, if you look through the set of standards, it doesn't mean the front yards have to be large, but they are meant to be intentional in terms of providing that transition. And we're emphasizing entrances and porches to get back to sort of that community feel and engagement and interaction outside the house. We have a lot of discussion in there about alleys and parking, um, encouraging alleys for rear access to housing to preserve that street frontage, um, and allowing space for buffering between the alley and the homes. Um, and we do, and what the other thing that alleys do is it reduces the garage dominance on the front facade. We have had a lot of discussion as a team and, and in Planning Commission about common and private open space and the need for that. Um, one, a recent study for Oregon, which was interesting, is they, uh, in terms of doing some equity reviews, is that Oregon with its land use efficiencies, they, uh, there was a study that looked at a hundred different, uh, urban centers across the United States. And Portland came out as one of the worst scores for having inequity in their neighborhoods relative to, um, heat islands, meaning that they reduced the, um, landscaping in some communities to really create density under the, under the premise of affordability, um, that those, those neighborhoods now have no landscaping or shade and are really, and have created a ten, ten-degree differential for those neighborhoods. And so they're all living in a much hotter space. And so we've had a lot of discussion here in our planning team about the need to, with all the different pressures for land use efficiencies and other things that are under dialogue in Oregon and in McMinnville, we want to make sure that there still is a value system for the need for open space, whether it's private open space with rear yards or side yards, or it's common open space. And then, uh, we've had discussion about compatibility and facades. And that's, um, we think that's important for McMinnville from what we've heard. And so we are, we are looking at standards related to siding, massing, and human-scale details. Um, our next steps with this big package is, it's currently in work session with the Planning Commission. We need to finish up our multifamily standards. Um, we're still working on those. We, we didn't feel comfortable with the final product. We want to take it a step further in terms of refinement. And then we deliberately left parking discussion, um, to be had with the Planning Commission, um, in work session rather than staff bringing recommendations because there's been so much dialogue in this community about parking and the need for parking, uh, for, um, off-street parking for residential uses. Whether, do we have too much? Do we have too little? What types of housing products make the most sense relative to the different types of housing need, uh, parking needs? So we wanted to have that work session with the Planning Commission and come, and develop that in, in collaboration with them. Interestingly, I'll go through the rulemaking next, and you'll see that that was a fairly controversial discussion at the state as well. And so it is good that we waited to have this discussion. We're waiting on the LCDC adoption of the Oregon Administrative Rule Compliance for Cities so that we can take our package and, um, go back to our consultant and say, we developed this package before the rulemaking committee finished their work. Their work went a lot deeper than we anticipated it would go in terms of the details and the, um, minimum thresholds that they have at the state level. And so the state has given us twenty thousand dollars as a grant to hire back our consultant to look at our package and see how, how it meets, uh, the state compliance. And then after we do that, we will start a public process of vetting the code with public hearings through the Planning Commission, then up to US City Council. Our goal is to adopt these by July one of two thousand and twenty-one. So in the House Bill, we don't have to adopt them until June thirty of two thousand and twenty-two. But we've always had a goal to do it earlier than that because we wanted to be able to bring these standards to bear to this community so that, that, so that this type of flexibility was available. So, was there any questions about that package of information?
Zach, I saw your hand go up a couple of times.
Um, yeah, the, um, on those slides already, um, we talked about infrastructure deficiencies and establishing, going through and looking and identifying infrastructure deficiencies as part of the rollout of HB two double oh one, as the cool kids call it. Uh, capital, do we have a capital improvement plan? And would that, would that be what dictates how we improve the infrastructure relative to not only this, but everything?
Yeah, and I'll talk about infrastructure deficiencies. And if I don't address that, Counselor Gary, let me know. Um, but yes, to answer your question, we do have a capital improvement plan in our utility, public facility plans. Um, if, but it's based on a, a density level much, so it's based on a density level that's lower than what the maximum density of our existing zones would allow. And then this House Bill has just sort of blown that out of the water. So, um, what we need to do is go back into our modeling and figure out if our infrastructure system can support the increased density that could occur in these, in these neighborhoods. And if they can't, what are the improvements we need to make? So let's say, you know, it's a pipe that's size too small. Um, do we, is it a local connector pipe? Or is it a larger, you know, backbone of the system? And is it something that we can easily replace? Do we have the funding mechanisms to replace it now? Or do we have to come up with funding mechanisms? That's all part of our review process, um, as we think about whether there will be areas where we cannot apply these standards yet.
Is the state giving us data accordingly with this to plug in to model those in ten years, assume X percentage of this converted to this?
Yeah, they are, but they're being very conservative about their data um, because the expectation is, is that this, that this won't have a lot of effect in many communities. However, in McMinnville, there are a couple of areas where we just, um, approve some very large subdivision and plan developments, um, which could be impacted by this House Bill. And there are also areas where, as you remember from the public hearing process, there were concerns about constraints in our public facility systems to support them, be it wastewater in one area or transportation in another. Um, so we, we went to the state and said, we really need to have the opportunity to study this at a more robust level for certain areas of the community.
And by more conservative, you mean they are saying that it will be more dense faster?
No, they're saying it's gonna be less dense, less dense and slower.
Okay, okay. So it's conservative depending on where you're sitting on the...
Yeah, and, but we'll go, we'll go through it. It's interesting because the rulemaking committee, um, when we, when they put together the rulemaking committee, uh, they divided it up into three different subcommittees. One was a missing middle housing code subcommittee, one was infrastructure constraints, and was, one was housing production strategy. And the infrastructure constraints committee finished their work long before the missing middle housing code. And so some things have come out of the missing middle housing code in terms of allowances. Um, and you would have seen that in the, in the draft that I sent you, where, you know, up to seventy percent of lots can be quadplexes. Well, that's a fair, I mean, if that actually occurs, that's a fairly intense
I see.
impact, yeah. And so they don't necessarily marry up very well in terms of the data that the infrastructure constraints subcommittee came up with.
That's helpful.
So that, that's why we went to the state. Actually, McMinnville got the largest award for this infrastructure planning work because we did have some concerns that we wanted to explore further.
And are we looking at being able to recoup those development costs from the developers? Or is that our investment in our infrastructure?
That will be our, well, we'll have to look at that. We'll have to look at our methodology. Because the other thing, the, um, I didn't provide you with the rules for the infrastructure constraints, but there, there are, um, it, it is framed, uh, in terms of how much we can put on the developer and how much we need to pick up in terms of being able to solve the infrastructure deficiency because the other premise of this program is affordability. So I'll go through these next slides then, and, and maybe it will, um, germinate some more questions.
I yield the floor.
Okay.
To someone else.
Kelly has a question, Heather. You're still on mute, Kelly.
They said something to the effect that transportation didn't count as far as building these middle-income housing developments and, uh, like mass transit. Are you gonna be addressing that in this? I'm gonna bring it up as a concern I have, yes, because obviously that's been a topic of conversation in McMinnville.
Yeah.
Thanks.
Any other...
So...
Go ahead, Kelly.
Okay, so, um, the, the other part of the House Bill outside of you need to develop a code is that, um, was, is that the state's putting together rules for cities in terms of how to comply. And we're, it's called Division forty-six, Middle Housing. I provided you a draft of that. This goes to public hearing September twenty-fifth with the Land Conservation and Development Commission. And as I said, they set up a, a committee, uh, from around the state to put together these rules and three separate subcommittees. Um, there are some concerns that we have as staff for cities. So the rulemaking committee was comprised of many different stakeholders. Um, and, uh, so developers of housing, uh, land use stakeholders that have concerns about efficiencies and things of that nature, affordable housing stakeholders, and then city planning staff. And city, and some of the rules that they came up with generated a lot of discussion amongst city planning staff as to whether or not they, we felt that it overextended the intent of the House Bill and also supplanted local control, uh, for some land use planning. And one of the most controversial discussions was the discussion of And one of the most controversial discussions was the discussion of parking. And so I wanted to go through that because I actually looking through the rules that have been developed, I think this is the one that would probably concern McMinnville residents the most. The others I think we can work through, especially given our residential site and design review package we put together that looks at compatibility. But for the parking, they have what they call in the, in the rulemaking minimum compliance standards. And what it says is no more than one off-street parking space per dwelling unit. The city cannot require more than one off-street parking space per dwelling unit. And most cities require, I don't know, two spaces per dwelling unit for the, for the larger and less dense housing types. And then it graduates less and less parking spaces for higher density housing types. So usually with a multi-family complex, you, you get down to one and a half parking spaces per dwelling unit. The premise behind the, the proposal from the rulemaking committee is that providing off-street parking is expensive and leads to less affordable housing and that to encourage, and also the need to encourage reduction in greenhouse gas emissions, we need to discourage vehicle ownership. And that the developer will do the right thing and respond to the marketplace. So those were the three sort of talking points. And, and that for when cities came back and said, you know, that puts a lot of stress on cities in terms of that do not have, you know, transit. So this, this is for cities with, that have, that are 25,000 up to 650,000. And so like a city in McMinnville where we don't really have a robust transit system, we have a transit system that gets people to their basic needs. So we have it set up so it will go to medical services and groceries and things like that. It does not get people to employment. And it doesn't get, you know, kids home from after school activities or anything like that. And we, we also don't have ride share really as a, a system in this community yet. So we don't have some of the alternative transportation programs that, that larger cities enjoy. So there were a lot of cities came forward and said, we're concerned about this. And the response was your additional needed parking. So if a family needs more than one parking space, they can get it with on-street parking availability. So oh, and I just, sorry, I just went through that. So in terms of McMinnville's current parking standards, just to let you know what our parking standards are today. And these, these have been in place since the eighties. And they're actually, I think they're very for the most part, pretty good. We've been talking about the need to reduce it for the multiple family dwelling units, but it's really based on size of household. So for single family and two-family dwellings, so that's a duplex is a two-family dwelling. We require two spaces per dwelling with four or fewer bedrooms and then one additional space for every two additional bedrooms. So the premise is the bigger the house, the more parking you're going to need. For multifamily, it's the same sort of premise. Size of, size of the dwelling unit is relative to the number of parking spaces required. So for multiple family, we require one and a half spaces per dwelling with less than three bedrooms. And then two spaces per dwelling unit with three or more bedrooms. And then we, one's, one space per dwelling unit, which is expressly reserved for senior or handicapped persons. So it's based on household size and type of housing product. With the new House Bill rules, if they move forward as proposed, all that will get reduced to one, except for the single family will, could still be two. So DLCD put out a memo in March about parking and middle housing because this did become a very controversial issue at the rulemaking committee. And it asked the questions, what's the anticipated demand for off-street parking and middle housing types permitted by House Bill 2001? How does this demand vary between jurisdictions throughout the state by occupancy characteristics and household size? And what direct and indirect costs and impacts do minimum parking requires, requirements impose on middle housing development? Who pays for those costs? Cause there was a lot of dialogue that saving money on parking doesn't translate to the end user in a private market, market. The conclusions was varied. So they had a lot of conclusions in there. I pulled out the high level ones, which was that household size corresponds to vehicle ownership. And then smaller households, one and two person comprise the vast majority of households and communities. And what they did was they surveyed several different communities based on census data. So household size corresponds to vehicle ownership is true. And that's, that our parking standards, standards actually accommodate that. But the smaller household size is not necessarily true across the board. So in McMinnville for census data, 91% of our households are two or more bedrooms and I providing here a percentage of what that looks like. So predominantly, most of our homes being built are two and three bedroom homes. That 75% of our homes are, are that way. And then in terms of household size, it, it varies. We have a lot of households that are 30%. 30% of our households are one-person households. And then 36% of our homes are two-person households and then goes up from there. Our average household size is 2.66 people, which is larger than several of the metro cities that, that were driving this discussion. The memo also showed vehicle ownership by household size for large non-met, I pulled it out for large non-metro cities, which is where we sit. And what it looked at was, so what this looks at is the number of people who have zero vehicles, which is right here. And then one vehicle, which is right here. And this, this is for one-person households. So I showed you that 30% of our households are one-person households. And then as you go up with a two-person household, the majority have two vehicles or more. I mean, this is fairly intuitive. But overall, for our household mix, 6% don't own a car, 37% own one vehicle, 41% own two vehicles and 16% own three or more vehicles. So what that means is 57% of our households own two or more vehicles. And with the proposal, we will not be allowed to require more than one park, off-street parking space per dwelling unit for anything that's not a single family dwelling unit.
Mr. Mayor, may I ask a question at this point?
Go ahead, Remy.
As you're looking at this and looking at historical data, what are we also, what are you also looking at in terms of forecasting? In terms of how population needs will change or demand will change. When you're talking about long-term planning and and those conversations that you, you have with industry.
So we have not done that work for McMinnville and, and our concern is that, that's the whole discussion of local control. If cities are allowed to define what the parking standards are that make the most sense for that community, presumably they would be doing that research and putting it together to make those decisions. We have not done that for McMinnville. It's because, you know, based on this process, we may not even have the opportunity to do that. So we weren't going to spend a lot of time on it. The reason I'm showing you McMinnville statistics is what's driving this is larger city statistics and the smaller cities like McMinnville in this cohort are not meeting those same data sets. But we're, but we're being lumped into the same requirements. If that makes sense.
So Remy, does that answer your question?
More or less, yes.
Yeah. So I don't, I don't, we haven't done that work. And so I don't have the answers for that.
Zach has a question.
Yeah, sorry. Just because in this topic, I had a thought about, so they're, they're not sort of supplying us the data or a playbook to get people off the road or other things like this that they assume will maybe one day we'll catch up. But, you know, they assume the whole world's going there and until then we have to close the gap. However, so do you see it helpful if we embarked on getting that, that measurable data and action plan to achieve some of these standards? As a part of this, so embark on our own study or maybe a climate action plan and, and look at ways to, ways to bridge our gap to the maybe more advanced population centers that you're saying it's, it's pushing us more towards data wise?
Well, we do have a transit plan. So the transit authority has put together a transit plan and did that based on data. And, and that was just finished in 2018 or 19, I can't recall. So that, there is good data there. The, the issue is resources. So every new fixed route is about $700,000 annual $700,000 cost. And so the, the problem is
Sorry, what's, what's?
So transit. So, so for people to get around to go to work and the grocery store and after school activities, if there's only one vehicle for the family, how does everyone get to places if they don't have alternative means of transportation to get there if they're going to disparate places at the same time? And so in McMinnville, we don't have Uber that the kids can pick up and go somewhere like they do in Portland. And we don't have transit that someone can get on to go to work.
And that, that's what costs, you're saying that 700,000 is it every additional?
It's something like that. Kelly and I both participated on the committees. They don't quote me on 700,000. But it's up there. It's up, it's more than half a million. And, and so there just wasn't the resources. So there was a lot of careful planning about how to, how to build incrementally on the existing system in McMinnville to get it to a place where it does get to that service. To where it can provide that type of service, but it's kind of the chicken and the egg because there aren't a lot of people riding the, the transit system. So it's not generating a lot of ride fare. So the resources for it are coming from public resources.
Sorry to interrupt Zach, go ahead.
Go ahead, Sal.
Oh, thank you, Mayor. To your point, we looked at this, or I looked at this a few months ago. And my recollection was that the amount of, of money for the Yamhill County Transit Authority that is paid for from ridership is actually only a very small portion of the authority's budget. Have you had talks with the Transit Authority about, you know, other funding strategies, like maybe cities go in and pool resources to subsidize that cost and maybe do like a free ridership program to start?
I do sit on the committee, the Yamhill County Transit Authority Committee for McMinnville. And there are discussions of other resources avail, other, how to, how to look at for other resources. And there has been discussion about approaching cities. McMinnville does participate financially in supporting the program from our general fund. But the other smaller communities in Yamhill County don't really have a lot of resources. And so they aren't able to participate. We have looked at grants. We've looked at levies. We're looking at what lots of other communities are doing. But to be honest with you, there are not many communities in the state of Oregon that have good transit systems. So they're the size of McMinnville. It's, it's just very hard to fund. But what I don't want to do is get into a dialogue about the transit system here. What I wanted to do, let me get through the parking discussion. You'll see where I'm leading because I'm, I'm searching for direction from the council.
Okay.
And maybe I'm providing too much information and that's why we sort of have gone off track a little bit. But I just wanted to show you some of the things that we're seeing, which have brought some concerns to our attention. So the other thing that came out of this data group was vehicle ownership by tenure, which is renters and owners. So we showed you that 60% of households in McMinnville own two or more cars. And then, but when you divide it up between owner and renter, the, the numbers change in there. So in terms of the renter, you have less renters who own two or more vehicles than home, than owner occupied dwelling units. And so the premise is, is that most of the missing middle housing products will be renters and not owners. And so in this, 14% of households own two or more vehicles and 41% of households who are owners own two or more vehicles. And so that's where DLCD felt comfortable saying if we only require one parking space per dwelling unit, you will not have households who need to find two off-street parking spaces on the street. The problem with this data though, that, that we had was that it, this is census data and in for McMinnville, it's mostly multifamily projects. Cause we don't have a lot of missing middle housing here yet. And so for apartment complexes, that's where we're seeing our smaller units being built in terms of the types of units, one bedrooms and two bedrooms. But when we looked at the data for duplexes and triplexes, they were similar size and in terms of bedrooms to what we're seeing in the single family market. And they're actually physically similar size as well. And so we had some concern about whether this data actually is representative of need in terms of McMinnville. And it got to, to our recommendation, which is that one size doesn't fit all. And that it really should be a local decision and allow local communities to do the work. So to your point, Counselor Drapkin, figure out what the forecasting is, figure out what your existing need is. And then come up with a ordinance that works for McMinnville that one works towards reducing reliance on vehicle ownership. But also allows households to be able to still enjoy a quality of life. And including having the parking they need. Some of our concerns are that not all communities have reliable alternative modes of transportation to support employment amenities and school activities. Developers do not always do the right thing. And we know that as planners, we're working with them all the time. And many developers are just building to the minimum standards because they're only worried about the point of sale at the transaction. Once they sell their lot or the, or the home, they are on their way. Especially if they're not a developer that has a long-term investment in your community, a generational developer. There, you know, it's, it's the profit margin. There's no empirical truth to the assumption that missing middle housing equates to the same size as a single dwelling unit. So throughout the rulemaking committee, we kept hearing that a duplex is the same size as a single family dwelling unit. If you're building 2,200 square foot, single family dwelling units, you're building a duplex with two 1100 square foot units in them. And that's not true. I volunteered to bring some empirical data to the table from McMinnville. So we did the work and looked at that. And that's not true here in McMinnville. Our average duplex was 1,400 square feet and our average single family home is not 2,800 square feet. So that, that just doesn't prove out in the, in the data. The other concern we have is that the savings from reducing the off-street parking does not actually translate to the end user in a private market of more demand and supply. We've seen that play out in McMinnville where you know, there's always a discussion of reducing development costs and fees and things of that nature. But the reality is the end cost for a home in a market where there's a higher demand and lower supply is what the market will bear in terms of comparables. So the developer is selling the home based on what, what the price per square foot that is selling in the market and not what they actually achieved in their pro forma necessarily if there's a high demand level. And so we do, we don't believe that the savings will translate to the end user in terms of removing this parking space and the cost associated with it. If that's the reasoning behind it. And especially won't translate to the end user over a market period of time. We will need to amend our comprehensive plan, a lot of it actually, because the comprehensive plan has a lot of policy, policies in it that say, don't rely on on-street parking for residential parking needs. We have had come into our planning commission, public hearing process several times, we hear testimony of people who are concerned about congestion of parking on the street with some of these higher density residential developments. We had one development that we were working on downtown where we were looking at a variance for parking for that to reduce the parking requirements. And the residential neighborhood surrounding it came out in full force and said, we really think you can't reduce the parking here because of the congestion it's going to put on the residential streets. So parking, whether it's, you know, whether there's empirical data to support it. As a perception here in McMinnville, it's an issue in terms of congestion of on-street parking in our residential neighborhoods. And then my personal one is I do, after thinking about equity and our planning processes and programs, I really fear that we're, by this provision of the code, we would be creating systemic inequity for lower income households. We're going to be telling households of, you know, of three or more people that you only have the ability to that you only have the ability to park one car off the street. Whereas the person who lives down the street that can afford a single-family dwelling unit has the ability to park two cars off the street. And I just don't think that that's, you know, in a in a community where you probably have two people in the household working at different times and different places and need cars to get there. And then if with my household, my teenagers each have cars because they have after-school activities that I can't get them to and from as a single parent, you're you're putting people in in positions where they're having to make choices about how they live based on their income levels because of what our code is doing. And that's concerning. So we brought it to the Affordable Housing Task Force and asked them, what's your perspective on this? Because there is a public hearing coming up. So we're not sure if City McMinnville wants to provide testimony relative to this or not. Staff had talked about coming in and providing testimony, but we want to make sure we have the support of the different policymakers and committees involved in this. So we asked the question, does the reduction in parking translate into more affordable product for the end user? And should there be concern about equity in terms of quality of life and amenities for lower-income households? The Affordable Housing Task Force discussed it as a body, and the majority thought it was appropriate for McMinnville to testify that this should be a local discussion based on local evaluations, goals, and needs. There were a few on the task force who felt that the proposed rules were fine as proposed and that the development community would correct itself if the market warranted it. But I wanted to bring that to you. And I wanted to find out if City Council had strong feelings one way or another on that. There's a couple of other things I want to bring to your attention before we talk about that. The OARs as proposed also have some other elements in them. This comes right out of the House bill, so they can't be changed. But when we file our code with the state to review to make sure it's compliant with the House bill and the new rules, we will also have to show what we're doing to increase affordability of middle housing. And we have to show it through ordinances or policies that include the following: waiving of or deferring of system development charges, and we've done that for qualifying affordable housing projects; adopting or amending criteria for property tax exemptions, and assessing a construction excise tax. Those have all been dialogued in McMinnville, some with controversy, though. And we have not moved forward with property tax exemptions or construction excise tax. And I want to call to your attention that this is not based on qualifying affordable housing projects. So this is based on to the private development world. And unless we're able to put a deed restriction on the property, we can't ensure that providing these public subsidies will actually translate into affordable housing. And then we also, to your point, Councilor Menke, the local government is not required. So we still can, we're not required to consider whether the amendments significantly affect an existing or planned transportation facility. So I I interpret that to mean if that's important to McMinnville, we can still consider that. The piece that's concerning to me is that there's a place in the the OARs where a lot of communities came, cities came forward and said, you know, we have these master-planned communities where we've allowed people to digress from what's in the zoning ordinance and put together these master-planned communities of variety of housing products and types to do this very thing, this missing middle housing encouragement. And how does this new bill impact those master-planned communities? Because they've gone through such a rigorous review and process. And so the bill says, the rules say, that this does not apply to to master-planned communities. However, in McMinnville, we don't we don't work under a master-planned process. We work under a planned development process in the same way other communities use master plans. But planned developments are used a little bit differently in other communities. So I'm not sure if that provision of the bill would allow McMinnville to, for instance, with Baker Creek North, say, we went through a planned development review. We did averaging a density. We identified the ability to provide these types of homes in a single-family residential neighborhood. And so that keeps something like Baker Creek North as is. Or if that whole development opens up to this type of effort and all two hundred and eighty lots could be fourplexes. So we need to review that and find out what that means for McMinnville in terms of that language. The provision there, though, is even though this doesn't apply to master-planned communities, if the master-planned community reduces the density to lower than fifteen units per acre, the city does need to review the missing middle housing components in that area. So are there any questions about that or strong opinions about whether we need to testify about local decision-making for the parking standards?
And and when is that testimony going to be again, Heather?
September twenty-fifth is the public hearing. So if we want to provide something in writing, we need to do that a week in advance.
Okay, we're up to six fifty-nine. So I think I'll just ask if there's any strong feelings right now from the council. I mean, we've taken all of our time just to have the presentation, lot to think about, but well put out. So I'll just kind of open it up for direction from council.
This is Sal. Just given the amount of work that you put into it, Heather, and being an alternate on that committee, I really think that you should test testify and weigh in on your expertise and experience because what you're saying really resonates with me tonight.
Thank you, Sal. Any other thoughts?
I've been discussing, it's Councilor Menke, can I talk?
Yep.
I I've been talking about this with Heather for quite a while now. And I think with all the work that she's put into it, she can obviously show that there's some legitimate reasons to testify for this, for us to make our own determination. So I would strongly agree with it. And I was one of the supporters in the Affordable Housing Task Force, too.
Thank you, Kelly. Zach, is your hand raised? Nope. I I know that we've talked at this at the League of Oregon Cities and in the smaller communities, you know, home rule, having the ability to have more local input, and especially a community such as ours that has such a thoughtful approach with our citizens as we're doing this and with the Planning Department and council, I would suggest to move forward to make that that testimony. Any other, any other thoughts? Seeing none of this, I think, Heather, there's a preponderance to to move forward to make that testimony.
Okay, and just to be, just to clarify, I'm I'm not recommending a parking standard. I'm just recommending the ability for McMinnville to do the evaluation for McMinnville.
Absolutely. Thank you for your presentation tonight. Again, you've got given us a lot of material that we can continue to to work on and read and understand. So with that, it is seven oh one, so I will conclude our work session this evening. Claudia, do we stay on this line for our city council or do we need to move to another line?
Nope, it's this one, Mayor, so whenever you're ready.
Okay. Why don't we just take a couple of minutes to stand? We've been going for an hour and a half already. So if people just need to move, let's let's be back within three minutes, so.